This is the 10 a.m. agenda. This meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to bring options for all set meetings on the live and on-demand video page of our website. In the event that we have to end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene on Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, 10:04 in this room. This is decision-making only, no oral testimony. If you're interested in reviewing written testimony, please go to our website. You will find a status link of each measure. Okay, first item is HB 476. Okay, so according to DOTAX, I know members had concerns about some of the additional taxes that some that could affect some of our local residents. But according to DOTAX, if you make $150,000 or less, you would end up paying your your regular rate or the new tax rate, whatever is lower. So it doesn't necessarily affect those who make $150,000 or less. So with that said, Chair is going to recommend to we're gonna blank the percentage. It's not. And then we're gonna put, we're gonna add up maybe 8% in the committee report. And then we'll change the effective date to 2050. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
HB 476 passed with amendments. Chair Volzai, Vice Chair Volzai, Senator Akino.
Aye.
Senator Decoy, excuse, Senator Elefante.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Inoue.
Aye.
Senator Kanuha.
Aye.
Senator Kidani.
Aye.
Senator Kim. decisions. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Wakai. Excuse, Senator Fadella.
Aye.
Motion adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 796. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Insert language to include tax credits established or renewed prior to or after December 31, 2025. Inserting language so that this act shall not apply to Part III of Chapter 3, 235, so that it does not affect tax credit for individual income taxes. Tax credits not affected by the bill are earned income tax credit, renters tax credit, food excess tax credit, resident tax credit, household and depending care services and employment of vocational rehab referrals. Okay, any discussion? If not, Chair votes say.
All members present other than Senator Wakai, excuse, Eddie Knows, any reservations? Recommend, Decoy and Decoy. Measure is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1059, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adding a two-year sunset to the exemption status. Any discussion?
No, my reservations, Chair.
Reservations for 1059. Okay, any others with reservation?
Reservation.
HB 1059, all members present, three voting with reservation. Measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1145. Recommendation is to pass with amendments affecting the date upon approval provided and adding, provided that Section 2 applies to tax years after December 31, 2024, and Section 3 applies to descendants dying or taxable transfers after December 31, 2024. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
HB 1145, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1146. Recommendation is to pass with amendments effect, perfecting the effective date to tax years beginning after December 31, 2024. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation. Recommendation adopted.
Okay, next item, House Bill 1147 will defer. Next item, House Bill 1173. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, and adopt amendments from DOTAX to delete references to Section 431, 7-204.6 as DOTAX does not administer the insurance tax. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1439. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
HB 1439, pass amendments. Anyone voting no with reservation. Measure adopted.
Thank you. We're calling to order the 1001 agenda. First item, House Bill 369. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments affecting the date to 2015. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation. Measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 370. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 371. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
HB 371, pass unamended. All members present.
The Land.
Anyone voting no. Recommendation adopted.
Next item, House Bill 430. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Will adopt amendments from the Department of Education to insert an appropriation section for 90 FTEs for public and private sector interns. Will amend to include language expanding the on-state on the state-funded internship program under DLIR in collaboration with D Herd for intern placement in state executive departments, agencies, or programs. Amend Section 2, Chapter 394-B to insert language establishing the State Internship and Workforce Development Program under the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations in collaboration with D Herd, and Chapter 394-C to include reporting requirements on intern performance and retention rate data as well as costs associated with the program. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present and pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 437. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
Recommendations to pass unamended. All members present, anyone voting no with reservation. Anyone else voting reservation? No. Measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 505. Recommendation is to pass with amendments on Page 7, Line 9. Replace appropriations by the legislature with appropriations by the City and County of Honolulu. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 506. Recommendation is to amend Section 2 to appropriate funds and FTEs for the Division of Conservation and Resource Enforcement. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 692. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
Recommendation is to pass unamended. All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 701. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 703. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
HB 703, pass unamended. Anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 774. Recommendation is pass with amendments, taking Department of Health amendments to insert a new appropriation section for 2 FTEs and other current expenses to assist with implementing this measure and affecting the date to 2050. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 800. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments, and delete the language that repeals the sunset provision of Act 4 Session Law of 2024. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
Members present, anyone voting no with reservation. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 807. Recommendation is to differ. Next item, House Bill 934. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. Taking amendments from DCCA to consolidate the duty of collecting and posting broadband infrastructure notices by transferring duties to from DCCA to the broadband office. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 990. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1001. Recommendation is to pass unamended. And we'll let the committee report reflect the AG's testimony. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
HB 1001, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1006. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
Recommendations to pass 1006. Unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1026. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
Pass unamended. All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1027. Recommendation is to pass an amendment, and we let the committee report reflect HHSC's request for a general fund appropriation for personal services costs. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1028. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1029. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1030. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
To pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1031. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
Pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1032. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
1032, House Bill 1032, pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1033. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
HB 1033, pass unamended. All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1034. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
Anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1035. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
HB 1035, pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1036. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
HB 1036, pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Next item, House Bill 1037. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
Pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Next item, House Bill 1038. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
Pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Next item, House Bill 1039. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
Anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1045. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments affecting the date to 2050, and we'll let the committee report reflect BNF's testimony for appropriation amounts. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
Okay, all members present on HB 1045, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1052. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Taking amendments from the POC to clarify that the funds expended from the Universal Service Fund mentioned on Page 5, Line 9, shall not exceed $150,000. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
Anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1055. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
Pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1065. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes say.
Pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1069. Recommendation is to pass with amendments affecting the date upon approval. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
Anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1152. Recommendation is to pass with amendments affecting the date upon approval. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
Anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Next item, House Bill 1296. Recommendation is to pass an amendment, and we'll let the committee report reflect BNF's testimony to to move reporting requirement from BNF to the Department of Defense. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
HB 1296, pass unamended. Anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, IT. We're calling to order the 1003 agenda. Okay, this item will defer to April 3rd, 2025, 10:02 in this room. Okay, calling to order the Joint Committee on Ways and Means and Judiciary. First item is House Bill 235. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion?
Yeah, real quick. Title this bill. Requires safe routes to schools, which sounds good, but one thing right off the bat, it's a red flag. Nobody from my district testified from the community on this. Number two, when it comes to red light cameras, currently there's not one over there. We put in a red light over there. There's gonna be much more traffic in that area that residents who don't know this bill is even here are gonna have to deal with. On top of that, with this red light cameras, currently, we're putting in this infrastructure off the backs of people who are getting cited. So we're giving citations, collecting money, and then putting it to red light cameras. And the DOT is looking to put in about 180 cameras over the next 10 years for $40 million. With that money, if we could clean 400 cesspools in the North Shore, which is a dire need for the environment, but instead, we're looking at putting a red light camera in. This is a problem for our district. I know we're gonna vote this through, but at least all you guys know that, because it's very disappointing. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if not, Chair votes say.
Okay, so to pass HB 235 unamended. Chair Volzai, Vice Chair Volzai, Senator Akino.
Aye.
Senator Decoy. Excuse, Senator Elefante.
Aye.
Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Inoue.
Aye.
Senator Kanuha.
Aye.
Senator Kidani.
Aye.
Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Lee, excuse, Senator Wakai.
Yes.
Senator Fadella.
Aye.
Recommendation adopted.
Same recommendation for JDC members. Unamended. Questions or concerns? Any further questions or concerns? Seeing none, Senator Gabbard.
Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Rhodesai, Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator Sanbana Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Alwa.
No.
As you finish this.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 329. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. And we're going to allow construction projects on other state or county property as authorized by the ledge. I think that's it. Any further, any discussions?
Thank you, Chair.
If not, Chair votes say.
HB 329 to vote up to pack with amendments. All members present, anyone voting no with reservation. Recommendation adopted.
Same recommendation for JDC on HB 329. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
With all members present for JDC, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, measures adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 427. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Inserting language for DCCA to partner with HDOA for the certification of biosecurity inspectors in Section 24. Inserting language for the salary requirements for the Deputy Director of Biosecurity in Section 20. Remove the language in Section 22 referring to the governor's approval on Page 26, and inserting new language for the Hawaii Invasive Species Council to directly work with the chairperson of the Biosecurity Emergency Response Program, and adding the transfer of Hawaii Invasive Species Council to the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity effective July 1, 2026. So it would be staggered. And removing appropriations in Sections 35, 36, and 37, inserting new appropriations for the Hawaii Invasive Species Council, Hawaii Ant Lab, and Personal Services for HDOA in 26 and 27. And we'll let the committee report reflect the appropriation amounts for the new sections. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
HB 427, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
JDC members, same recommendation on the biosecurity bill, HB 427. Any questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
All members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 477. Recommendation is to pass with amendments affecting the date to July 1, 2025. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
JDC members, same recommendation on 477 relating to Hawaii employee security law. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, Senator Gabbard.
For JDC, any no votes or reservations? All members present. Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 664. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Will adopt the AG's amendments to add back the AG's office to the commission. Any discussion? If not, Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Same recommendation for JDC, HB 664, relating to gun violence prevention. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passed.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 697. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion?
Sorry, Chair. I don't know if we can go back, but 664 was a no vote for me.
JDC, we'll reconsider our vote on 664. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On 664, any no votes or reservations for JDC?
No, thank you.
No vote for Senator Alwa. Measures adopted.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, next item, House Bill 697. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any this? And any discussion? If not, Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no. With reservations. Adopted.
Yeah, I'll pass when I'm ready. I'll pass when I'm ready.
Same recommendation for JDC members on HB 697, pass unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Any no votes or reservations?
No.
Senator Sanbana Ventura is no.
No here too.
Senator Alwa is no. Measure passes.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 712. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Same recommendation for JDC members, HB 712, relating to the 340B drug pricing program. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Senator Gabbard.
Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1064. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments, and attaching the State Fire Council and the Fire Marshal Selection Commission to the Department of Law Enforcement instead of the Department of Defense, changing all references from the Department of Defense to Department of Law Enforcement, and clarifying that the appointment to the initial fire marshal should not affect the fire marshal's administrator status on January 1, 2026, and setting the state fire marshal's salary to 100% of the salary of the Director of Human Resources Development. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
Members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Oh, JDC members, Chair's recommendation on HB 1064 is the same as Senator Dela Cruz's. Any questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1091. Recommendation is to pass with amendments affecting the date to 2050. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Okay, JDC members, same recommendation on HB 1091 relating to sewer transmission lines. Any questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1231. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
JDC members on HB 1231 relating to traffic safety, same recommendation, unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
Any no votes or reservations?
No.
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Sanbana Ventura. No vote for Senator Alwa. Measures adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1297. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
HB 1297, pass unamended. All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Same recommendation for JDC members on HB 1297 relating to procurement. Any questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
For JDC, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 1325. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not Chair votes say.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Okay, for JDC members, same recommendation. Questions on HB 1325 relating to housing, questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Okay, next up is 302, yeah. Okay, next up is HB 302. Excuse me, relating to cannabis. This does a whole bunch of things. The recommendation is to pass with some amendments. Which we have we do have prior concurrence for from Senator Gail Cololi. We'll take the AG's requested amendments, clarify the state of mind to intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly for unlicensed operation of dispensary. Include criminal penalties for violation of the advertising provisions, make that offense a misdemeanor. We'll amend HRS 28131C to enable the AG's drug nuisance abatement unit to enforce violations of Chapter 329D as provided under Section 7121270. Clarify that the AG, not the Director of Health shall expend appropriated funds at Page 15, Line 17 to 18, and will require cannabis cultivator licenses to meet the same production facility and processing requirements or requirements under HRS 329D. We'll add an effective date of January 1, 2027 for cultivator licenses. And that's it. Questions or concerns?
Concern.
Senator Alwa.
Yeah, this pretty much shuts down medical provider in my district in Waialua, so before you know.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or concerns? It does have a bad date, by the way.
I'd like to also point out, HHSS prior concurrence.
I'm sorry, yeah. I understand, and so my understanding was that you were okay with the
That's why I said.
Okay, then good.
I just wanted.
That's why I didn't say it, so sorry. Sorry about the confusion. Yes, we have prior concurrence from both previous chairs. Okay, seeing no other comments, Senator Gabbard for the vote.
On HB 302, HD2SD1. Recommendations to pass with amendments, any no votes or reservations?
No.
No vote for Senator Alwa, the measure passes.
Ways and Means, same recommendation.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
And thank you. Next up is HB 306 relating to state water code penalties. Adds a minimum penalty and maximum penalty per violation of state water code and authorized commission on water resource management. Consider each day that a violation exists or Water resource management, consider each day that a violation exists or continues to. Uh, create a separate offense. Uh, the recommendation here. Is to pass unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Ways and means, same recommendation.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next up is HB eight thirty relating to historic preservation reviews beginning seven one, twenty twenty seven, requires state historic preservation division of DNR to. Contra- contract its review of proposed. State projects on privately owned historic property. Uh, recommendation here. Is to pass with amendments, um. Try to address DNR's concerns to better implement the proposed use of third party reviewers by adding language to require third party reviewers to follow state ethics rules. Adding language to prohibit third party reviewers from being able to review any project that they or their employer has worked on. Uh, like to change the language to allow ship D to be able to reserve the right to determine whether the use of a third party reviewer was appropriate and to terminate the third party. Reviewer contract if either the third party reviewer has evidenced insufficient compliance with the state historic preservation rules. And statutes or has not completed assigned historic preservation reviews accurately. Allow but not required ship D to use a third party reviewer by changing show, may. Insert a blank appropriation amount and blank numbers for positions for DNR to oversee the consultants. Except uh, Hawaii State, um, I go. Hawaii State Government Employees Association's request. To sunset the bill after two years. And I'd like to insert comments in the committee report expressing. Uh, HGA's concerns about vacancies and the role of civil service system. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Recommendation on HB eight thirty, HD two S D one is to pass with amendments. Any no votes or reservations from JDC? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Ways and means, same recommendation.
Members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next up is HB eight sixty. This is relating to liability specifies that a state or county may undertake limited resurfacing of an existing road and surface of any street of which the owner jurisdiction is in dispute with the state and county. Recommendation is to pass with some amendments. Um, do have prior authorization from both previous chairs. Authorize the state and counties to broadly perform repair work or maintenance work as opposed to the limited. Uh, things that they were allowed to do under the current draft and clarify that the state or county who. Repairs or maintains the street as applicable may only be liable for acts or emissions arising out of the repair maintenance of that street that the county. Or the the state or the county respectively performed at the time. Um, so there. No, no joint and sever liability. And will make conforming amendments to the preamble. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
For JDC, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Ways and means, same recommendation.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next up is HB eleven forty one. This is relating to updating public land leases and requires that. Lease extensions approved by the Board of Land and Natural Resources be drafted on forms that reflect contemporary leasing practices. Uh, recommendation is to pass with technical amendments only. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
For JDC, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Ways and means, same recommendation.
Anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next up is HB eleven fifty nine. This establishes a commercial harbors emergency evacuation working group. Uh, recommendation is to pass as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
The JDC, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Ways and means, same recommendation.
Anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to HB fourteen eighty two, this is the hemp bill. Uh, recommendation is to pass with some amendments. Um, again, we do have prior concurrence from both previous. Chairs. And the recommendation is to exempt existing DOH hemp permit holders from the registry. And add a provision to section one of the bill that exempts hemp processors, hemp product retailers or hemp produce retailers with a valid permit under chapter three twenty eight G from the registry. Like to add an exemption so that retailers or distributors selling CBD textures and or CBD CBD. Topicals are not required to be added to the registry. Like to align the Department of Health current THC limit on textures with the federal standard. Point three percent THC. And will define textures as oil based, unflavored products containing no more than two ounces per container. And will put a defective date of April twenty three, twenty fifty seven on it. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
JDC, are there any no votes or reservations?
No.
No vote for Senator Alwa, Vice Chair has reservations. Measure passes.
Ways and means, same recommendation.
Anyone voting no with reservation, recommendation adopted. Oh, reservation, Senator Kim. Measure adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.